Alright, I'd like to call the September 25th for Rusty's meeting. The order will start with the election of 596 America.
596 to the right of the United States of America and truly evolve it for which stands one nation under God, the new visual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you everybody for attending. Okay, the first quarter of business is the consent agenda.
So I have a couple corrections or anything, whatever. On the payment of bills, I'm gonna call out the check numbers. So it's check number 32987 to 33016, direct deposit 919 to direct deposit 929, ETF 122 to EFT 124, Comcast for 29435, and Comcast for 412. And then, on new business A, we do not have any blood dependence.
I'm sorry?
On new business A, we do not have any blood dependence.
Yeah, Jimmy, I was supposed to attach it to the minutes and I thought it was a general thing.
And then, are we getting ready to be, we're gonna postpone that?
Yeah, we'll postpone.
Do we want to just take it out or do you want to leave that there and postpone?
We'll postpone it.
Okay. D?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Any other additions or corrections? And your motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the corrections you guys stated.
We have some motions for roll call vote.
Yes and yes.
Yes.
Yes, so yes.
Uh, Stevens, yes. Okay, citizens comment. We have Mr. Wong sleep. You're the superintendent of Richmond Schools and Ms. Sutton, you're on the board?
Yes.
Okay, and then you wanted to do a presentation on the upcoming bond issue.
We're keeping up with the public commentary. Good evening, welcome. Thank you for inviting us here. My name is Brian Martin, the superintendent of Richmond Middle School. This is Danielle Sutton, one of our board members. One of the things that are very, we hold the highest standard of resub, if you want to be sure that we're transparent, we're getting factual information out there. So this coming November, November 4th, there is a ballot initiative now to hold for the residents of the district, of which is Casco, Columbus, Richmond, Cleveland, and the city of Richmond, to consider a zero, a net zero increase military. Let me explain that to you in a minute. So, right, we asked, why are we needing this? This chart, and it's been published on our websites and our information, the last 10 years, our enrollment has had a steady growth. We've done enrollment projections. You can see in the last 10 years, we have about 175 more kids than we had 10 years ago. The enrollment projection, which is the next slide, which shows us, when we go 10 years out, when they look at birth rates, death rates, housing market, all the economics that they do to make these projections, they're expecting us to have another 16 to 20% increase, which puts about 300 more students in our building, which is pretty remarkable.
So before you, you said 10 years?
A 10-year projection shows about 30, so average is about 30, 35 students a year. To date, with the school year just starting, we already 35 students more to work in June, will be mine. So the enrollment this coming, these are district residents, there are two of them are school choice, so we're going to work here. So you might be asking, how can this be a no, an no increase in the tax rate? So this chart here, which is also on our website, the blue represents our current debt rate. Last year, this July, our debt rate decreased what we love.
It decreased.
What we're expecting is next July, that debt rate is to decrease again. What we're asking the voters to do is continue the debt rate at a July 2025 rate. That's the green. So if approved, it would be no increase in what we're currently paying as a debt rate, but it would generate $51.8 million for the district. So you might have followed by, so what are you planning to do with those debt, those funds? So, in the lecture that's going out, you might have received the Richmond Middle School flyer, the high school, we have one coming out, it's at the mailbox tomorrow at the elementary school, putting additions on all three of our buildings. The primary focus of this bond is additions and increasing that parking lot to accommodate the current enrollment as well as future growth and train cars and buses on our PMS. So, in all buildings, we have classroom additions, the largest addition is at our middle school. Currently, Richmond Middle School has zero classrooms available to expand. So if we had to add a section of fifth grade there, we don't have a physical classroom to put new students in, which is part of the reason why we're asking for this bond. You might have remembered in the 2019 bond, we asked for additions on the elementary school, and we built 10 classroom additions. Today, two of those classrooms are available for use, the other eight have been increased since 2019. The elementary kitchen, you'll see, is an expansion of the kitchen, that's the original kitchen when the building was built. It's not designed to handle the number of kids at the elementary school. Currently, we have 600 students that are pre-K through 12 at the elementary school alone. So this bond is designed to issue a two series, with the first series created in 2026 from February, March, for about $26 million. We would then issue the second series and pass by the voters in 2028. The first series is designed for the middle school and the elementary school parking lot addition. The second series is designed for the high school and elementary addition. Our first need is the middle school, because there's physically no space for them to be in. I encourage voters to visit our website, we have put everything on our website. You might have seen the QR code on some of the flyers there. If you go there, you're gonna see our enrollment projection report, you're gonna see all the meetings that we plan, all the video links for any board meetings that we've had discussion about, all the community meetings that we've done, all the meetings that we've gone out to, the community kind of shared this information. Everything is online, we want to make sure voters have everything to make it more efficient. So I'll leave you with this, I just encourage people to vote on the board. Is your question appropriate for this?
I do have a question, but a few years ago, maybe it's more than a few, I think, did we move the fourth graders to the middle school?
Correct.
Are they still?
Of all 2019, we moved our fourth graders to the middle school, because we were running out of room in the elementary.
Is it still the fourth grade still there?
Correct, it is still the middle school, we have a four or five wing at the middle school, and it's basically a school within a school. There's something about elementary, they have self-keeping classrooms, they have their own lunch, they have a recess schedule, it's just their house in the middle school area.
Does the members of the public, uh?
I got a question, can you say a zero net increase? Are you gonna not raise my SEV and my tax bill, SEV?
That, I...
I know you're not, I don't give a shit to people saying, no increase, every year the assessment's going up.
You're absolutely right, so even though the last year, we did do a decrease from the debt rate, you're absolutely right, your value goes up.
You know it's going up, don't say yes and it can go up. It's going up.
Cool, you're...
So it's not a zero wash, whatever the assessment goes up, so is my school taxes. We had a beautiful thing back in 1894 in Michigan, do you remember proposal A? At the time, Richmond was at $52 a thousand and some change, East China was at 23, you know, why, too big power plant. They had a hell of a tax base, and they still had a hell of a tax base. So don't tell me taxes ain't going up, you have to...
I would agree that from proposal A shift rate, the ability of local schools.
It was a beautiful thing, from 52 to 6, I think that's $46 a thousand different, just on the six state mills, is these damn bonds or these idiots, oh, okay, yeah. How many total bond dollars are we paying in Richmond School District if we stand at 10.7?
I don't know the exact dollar value, but I can give you an approximate rate, that our current rate is about 6 point, I'm ballparking 6.5.
Okay, thanks.
Was the debt rate that we've been having proper.
Right, that's 50 cents over our six state mills for public education, we're paying more for debt than we are for state six mills, right?
I don't have those numbers right, I'm assuming what you were saying was...
I wish, yes, you know, and if you really want to get, you could go to A and B's school district. That's another thing you add on, how much money do you pay for architects for this design in the total budget, to get that add on?
On the website, is the bond application, and that application, it specifies every dollar, how it's broken down into electrical, architect fees, construction manager, sure, it is listed by building, site, the total of that 51.8.
Why doesn't the Michigan come up with three proposals for elementary, middle school, and high school, where you don't have to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars for architectural fees? This is free choices, but no, we go to Taj for all buildings, school districts, and look what you pay just in architecture fees, have our tax down the line. There, ROI, return on investment, that doesn't do the taxpayer any good. If I want to invest, I go to New York Stock Exchange. All that isn't debt to everybody in the school district, not just Richmond.
It's everybody who lives in the district of Richmond, which is Casco.
But they all have their bond issues and...
Yeah, yeah. And that's the structure in the state of Michigan, in some states, they don't do this. They have the states issue districts dollars to do additions and renovations, so it's not a, someone's paying for it at some point, and it's not just free.
Another statement, Richmond is a school district, nationwide, 50 states, let's say, as the United States, we never shoveled the most dollars in that our public education system with scoop shoves. And we come in 47 or 48 out of 50, the debt is a pan, I don't see where it is, when we come up that number nationwide.
Right, I'm a state, you're not, I'm a state, I don't know if it's that.
This is a private office. Right, I mean, what's wrong with our public education system?
Well, I can tell you, I can only speak for Richmond. And so when you look at our elementary scores, we are one of the top of the county, and here at the state home and health.
Right.
Our high school makes significant growth. We've added, in the last 10 years since I've been there, we've added a CTE, a more career check of education program. We have a partnership with the Richmond Lions in us, so our kids leave high school and can actually get the state national certification with a job. We have a culinary arts program.
Right.
So we've added these programs to try to diversify opportunities for kids beyond type.
And not shut out. Not very many hackers in Oregon, period.
You're absolutely right.
Everyone, they're very proud. When are they gonna share statewide or nationwide, these schools?
Jim, we have a serious committee meeting, I'm talking to Wong sleep outside.
Yeah, he can't be prepared twice. I think I know where I'm being, not in Richmond, have a good day.
Mr. Wong sleep?
Yes?
State Michigan, what percentage do they allow for projected growth? Do they limit you, can you, can you say to them, we're expecting 35 to 40, maybe more students next year than the year after? Do they limit your building sizes to fit your district?
Yep, so when you submit the bond application, which is also on our, the actual bond application, we have to submit to the state mission, building utilization.
Yes.
So you have to have so much of your building under that threshold, before the building can consider you to go for a bond. We are at that level, that we qualify for bonds, because we don't have enough space. They also require districts to submit to a third party, there's several members out there. We use Michigan Schools as opportunity, as our vendor, to do that enrollment projection. So it's not just what I put together, it has to be a legitimate company that uses multiple methods. So the one chart here, you're gonna see, there's five different methods they use. Regardless of the method, they're showing an increase. One of the methods is just taking all of our students and moving them up. One of our methods looks at accommodation of school of choice and, or district resident. One of the methods takes into consideration development in the area, who owns property, whether it's potentially a subdivision, so forth. So they take all of those aspects, and they come up with, again, five different ways you could look at a projection. And what the state's looking for, I'm sorry, what the state's looking for is, are all of those methods or scientific processes showing, or articulate the same result? If you have some methods that are taking it this way, and some methods are, then they start questioning whether that number that they're projecting is truly a valid number to rely on. So again, in the bond application, you're gonna see maps that look similar to this. It's our building, and it shows the projected condition, and showing what's currently being used in the room for the building, and what is not. The state doesn't count certain classrooms in that projection, like for example, if we have a resource room, or what we call specials, computer class teacher, that physical space is not counted in the enrollment projection.
I see, alright. And are you, let's say, last year's numbers, are you graduating less or more students than you're taking in, in kindergarten?
We are now at a point where it's on average about the same. The numbers in our middle grades are more than what we're graduating now. So if those students are going up, our graduation numbers are going higher, if more students exit.
What is your graduation rate in Richmond?
The rate, like, how many have to graduate? Were like 92.7%, 92 or 93%?
Any chance, or could I know that this year enrollment went down, so what happens if, you know, if there always has some community too? If the enrollment goes down like it is now, what are you giving to with that space? So you adjust it for this boom, but then if it attracts, like, it adds to your graph, you know, if there has been down years, right?
You're absolutely, we had down years, we've had low years of enrollment projection, but we did years that exceeded. What we've done in the past, when I started in Richmond in 2014, the middle school classrooms, teachers were spaced all over. My second year, we started consolidating that to certain areas, so we shut down electricity, heating, cooling, recently shut down the one wing of the middle school. We also got a little bit, we had people rented out facilities to help utilize the building. So, I can't stand up and say the kids aren't coming, I can't guarantee that.
I mean, A and B's got empty buildings, right, right down the line.
I think the one...
It's like, okay, you need the money, build it, and it's not like they build it, they will come type thing all the time.
Correct. What you said at the very beginning, most districts in the state of Michigan have increasing, or are decreasing a lot. The state of Michigan, if you look at the total population, there's only a handful, a dozen districts in the state that are showing this trend. Our strategy to draw students is looking at program, is looking at what we can provide students, both where I'm at college track, who are not all coming to college, do enrollment opportunities, the International Academy sends to a lot of CTE, career programming. We started esports, I don't know how many of you are video gameers, but there's a lot of money for kids in esports, programming and so forth. Our teams, that started three years ago, we're in states two years, twice as a state. So we have a lot of accomplishments that are drawing families to our community. I moved into the district three years ago, I literally live right behind the school, I can walk every day to the school, I can go on yard, went to Richmond. If you have not been to our district, probably, I will give you a personal story, you can just see what your dollars are being paid for. To respond, you said about A and B having empty building, Richmond is unique, we are one campus, we have three buildings, one elementary school, one middle, one high school. We don't have extra building, we don't own land anywhere else that we could build another building. It is just one campus, and it's very beautiful, you know, because we have that, our district is one.
So you were talking about, would you project 300 kids?
Over the next 10 years, on the low end, we're projecting 16% of 300.
What about like just on the township?
I can get you that, I don't have to come the next day, and I can get you that number, I don't have to break down.
This is because, we did, I don't know if our master plan meshes with their data, right? Because there's only going to be so much growth by our levels that we have, unless a household has 20 kids or whatever.
Well, there are two major developments in our condition, one is the swine creek, which is on the north side of Richmond, which is the township. They have the infrastructure, there's about 40, it's 47, I think, 44, it's over 40 homes that are scheduled for them. The area that I moved into three years ago, there's about, there's 10 lots still available in there, but they're not, they're built houses, 54 houses that are scheduled to be in there. There's a lot of little kids, there are three, four, and then there's five kids in it, so that young enrollment is what's coming up through our system.
Yeah, and go back to...
Back in the 60s and 70s, Richmond schools were pretty cool, but family sizes were a lot bigger than they are now. So that's, you know, that's a change in America. You see more building, a lot of times, that doesn't equate to more kids in school.
Yeah.
Because there's smaller families or people that...
And you can see where some people might get frustrated, is because, okay, we're talking about growth in other areas that aren't in the township, but we still have to pay, right?
And that's a challenge with districts and towns of the, that before towns, it's a long city that we, we come as our partners.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if anybody has any question, I will call you, I'll reach to someone, I'm very concerned, but I don't know if I can answer that.
I'll continue your website on our next slide.
Thank you very much, have a great night. So I can have his number?
I gotta do this, please.
Yeah, Jim's gonna call, just...
I'm on E, please.
Okay, text, alright, does it? Does anyone else want to say, we have another public comment in the meeting if you'd like, but...
Yeah, it's been a while since I've been on, so we used to do this at the end. Do I gotta fill something out that I have, what would happen?
No. There you go, we're gonna have one at the end, so do you want to wait till the end?
I can wait till the end.
I can worry now, if you want me to, it's your meeting, go ahead. Alright, so, I just came today, I would like the township to implement some type of ordinance and order or soliciting sales. You know, they come to waves around here, and not all the time they're legitimate, I don't think we currently have anything, right, that says, they have to either like pull, they gotta go out of the way, right? Or pull, they do whatever, they make it not as frequent, basically, and make it legitimate. I myself, I would get to it, I don't know, we're in the mail sense, but...
Who have you had come to your door, other than the last wave of those people that came because we had roof damage?
Oh, there's, yeah, I mean, every, every year, there's at least three or four trips. Meisner?
Meisner what?
Meisner Melton?
I, we had a great deal, maybe four or five, six companies come when there was that hail.
The storm, yeah, that was...
That was the last of the demand.
Yeah, you see on township pages all the time, people walking around and just unannouncing, I'm not kidding.
I, when I lived, I had a neighbor, the local church member, who they stopped by, right, and...
Okay, yeah, there was just a Facebook post, somebody who was waiting those, trying to sell for those, this week's. I mean, it's not a cost of payment, I don't know, anybody monitors.
The only problem with that is, we have to, how do you enforce that, even if we do an ordinance, how do you enforce that?
Of course, anyone's...
No solicitation.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I have no trust with society, but, yeah, I think, no solicitation, yeah, try that. Oh, I got one of them, I got a couple things at RT where some...
Okay, well, thank you for your comment.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, let's get on there, let's wait. Okay, the first one is Blight ordinance at 5680 Melton Road. I will read through what our police enforcement officer wrote. I am asking the board to proceed with the court order to remove the vehicles from the property at 685680 Melton Road. My understanding, there's roughly 80 vehicles on the property. I spoke, Minnie's collection, regarding this matter, and they told me there's no cost for the township to remove the vehicles. Minnie, she told me that they could, they have two tow trucks running at the same time, their yards about a mile away. I'm hoping we can remove the cars in two or three days. The owners of this facility did tell me that I will need an officer present to check for the VIN numbers of each vehicle, to make sure the vehicles are not stolen. I am not sure how long this will take to remove the vehicles, the police department will most likely charge the township to have an officer there, they're obsessed to be removing the vehicles. I have done everything I could to help the property owner comply with what the township is asking. The property owner has done nothing to help the situation of correct Blight violation. And you read Judge Weston's, uh, court, yeah, so, order, so, he had until September 5th, nothing was done?
How many cars?
About 80. That's how many supercar accidents they put on?
80, yeah, outside.
Eight, eight?
Yeah, 80, I was selling farms.
If you do Google Eric.
Do come to my house, and I'll show you.
Yeah. Or you're living there. Do you think that, so, the 80 vehicles are outside, or in condition to?
No, all 80 are still outside, some have moved in, but the ones that don't run, they're just drivers, or definitely, probably just one or three, minimum, that's a, so. I provided, according to enforcement official, with contact insurance department to land this up, he's gonna start looking at that tomorrow, so...
I have two questions, comments, concerns. First, I think we need something in writing from this Minnie's collision, saying that it will not cost us anything. Is it, I, I know, you know, it's, you know, friendly, but you gotta have a paper trail, because it could be like, I never said that. And then, second, do we know how much the police department is going to charge us?
Yeah, that's what we're gonna, person's gonna find out tomorrow when he calls, sorry, short talk.
Okay.
He wasn't in today, so...
Well, I think I would want that in front of him.
I want that before we...
Alright, so we'll get those two found out, and then, do we want to bring it back in October, or do we want to just...
We want to bring it back until those cars start going.
Okay. Well, we could right now...
The fence as well.
We could get, I would say, we could either get approval from the board now, where they're saying, hey, we get a guarantee from any collision about that it will cost us nothing, and the price from the sheriff's department.
I don't want to approve anything without saying, I want it right.
Alright. We'll put this on hold then.
And then, obviously, we usually charge us for things like... And then, obviously, we usually charge us for things like this. Well, if they're looking up the numbers, I'll.
Oh, right, that's right.
That's on here.
They're just not ensuring the safety on the property, right? They're looking up the numbers.
Is all of that included in the violation, to the violation?
No, no. Okay. All right, the next one here, um, this is about the DTE lighting agreement at Marine City Hightown and Palms. Okay, they're doing the roundoff there, Marine City and Palms. There used to be one traffic plant there, now there's going to be four. Um, we need this agreement approved by the board, so the road commission, DTE, can do the work of putting on the poles. They said right now the light we're paying for, actually we're not, our township is paying for that light. All the lights are per, we do pay for, we do ask, um, compensation for the community we share with, except that light we have to pay our township. So, we just need an approval from the board here. All road's gonna be responsible is the estimated total annual lamp charges of seven hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. In the county, the Sycamore County Road Commission pays for the actual installation of the poles.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Mm-hmm.
So, now if we're responsible for these poles, what if? Not just the powering of it, but what if any, any, should we gonna pay for that?
No. We're only responsible for the annual, the electric charges to run the light.
We have a problem over the township, like, um.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thirty-two, yeah, yeah. So, we do like a, a monthly fee for all those thirty lights.
Yeah. And the ones, and the ones we share with neighboring communities, we have an agreement with them where they go half that. So, the road commission pays for them. Except one, like, light at, um, Marine City Hightown County line, four townships share that one. Just the higher limits and, um, and Chesterfield. And Chesterfield's, that's a fifty-three dollar. Okay. All right. Any more questions on this?
I have a question. Um, is there anywhere in the contract that says that the road commission is paying that initial eighteen hundred dollars? Because on page two, it says customer is just the township. I mean, I know in the email here, it says that the road commission is paying, is that good enough?
Well, when I talked to, um, Phil Hazelton, the, um, the director of the road commission, he did say we're all responsible for the electric cost of that. So, but I can give this.
Well, it says it in his email. I did forget somewhere, it's on, it's like, oh, yeah, it says the road commission will cover the construction costs to install the additional. Is that good enough? Do you guys think?
I think so.
I think so.
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, purchase agreement. Is that what we're gonna call it? The purchase agreement?
For the light agreement. DTE lighting agreement.
The DTE lighting agreement.
Yeah.
Um, with an annual estimated charge, lamp charge of seven thirty-two ninety-two.
Okay, we have motion support to, um, to approve the DTE lighting agreement with the annual charge of seven hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Record call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stover, yes.
Stevens, yes. Motion, Stevens. Okay, ramp refurbishment quotes. A ramp, or haywood ramp out there in Old Hall, it is twenty-nine years old, installed nineteen ninety-six. It's, um, getting to be some, um, worn out there, and Jen was successful in obtaining that ramp. How much is this ramp for?
Ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand dollars. I went out, got some quotes here for a ramp. We have Wayward, Waywood Services LLC. They would just refinish the, the hay camper, um, ramp, replacing, um, rotten boards for twenty-one hundred dollars. Clean cut construction replaced the entire deck of the ramp. They said the ramp, the, the structure's still solid, but they recommend all the decked in be replaced. Then we have option one, help construction, I'll, I'll say replace the deck and hand rail it, refinish after a one-year period. And cleaning, clean cuts have the same thing. When you replace its boards, you can't paint them, you have to let them, a.
Well.
Black one. And, um, what's that?
I didn't know.
Can we get new wood ones, so we do a one-sixth ton?
That's forty thousand dollars.
Yes. Forty?
You can get a ramp.
Oh. Any more questions?
I did get hers, because I thought, hey, let's just do that at forty thousand.
Um, it's way over.
Yeah.
Mind me one of those where he really didn't want to do the job, so.
Okay, that's, and then we have option two, help construction just replace the deck, refinish after a one-year period for a thousand dollars.
So, that means they won't do the hand railings, just.
Yeah.
So, the hand railings are thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah. It's a lot of wood.
Yeah, I know all that wood. So, the first one thought that it was solid enough that they didn't really have to redo it.
Yeah.
But the other two people.
They recommend, they look underneath it, and they said, yeah, those, um, deck boards need to be replaced.
On these, um, is it Kelly contracting?
Mm-hmm.
Um, on those two quotes, the first item on there is deposit required to be completed. Two thousand dollars for expedited scheduling for late fall twenty-twenty-five. So, their charge is an extra two thousand dollars to get it done this fall. Is that, am I reading correctly?
I think that's fair, both, I can give, um, the cost, but I believe that's fair, both of them, the cost of the entire.
Well, it's, I, I don't know, the way it's worded, it sounds like it's, it's like part of the price, but that it's two thousand dollars to get it done this fall. Is what it looks like to me.
So, when is we have, will you?
Well, the problem is, is with this grant, is I have to have, it has to be completed within a hundred and twenty days.
Okay, that's, okay, what about if we, because he says if we paid it off, you come, pay the price, he comes back in the year to refinish it, right? So.
So, with the ten thousand dollars, we have to use that much? If there's anything left, we will keep it?
Yeah.
Unless there's a different project, but it has to be for ADA and voting, that's like the.
Well, you, you look at clean cut construction, it's fifty-five hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, then, obviously, the deposit is rolled into the price.
Right, right. And this clean cut, you had no problem doing it this fall?
Yeah, there was, I'm not finished, he said, he had, he says he knows the guy, but he said, yeah, wait a year, and.
Oh, okay, so that is that's good.
Right.
Well, there's somebody in the office, they're all over there, they're charging three hundred bucks.
What did you ask?
It's bizarre.
What did you ask?
Kelly contracting, LLC is not responsible for dead grass, uh, or dog feces. Human area, three hundred dollars feet per day. I just, when you see things like that, it gives you some pause about how this company operates, to me. That's bizarre. Human.
Some acceptance, some overhand.
We don't, they don't say anything about, about the reasons.
No, he just, he looked at, he said, the elements were good, he just recommended the deck.
Oh, okay.
See, it's like three different people saying, three different, totally different.
Are there any of the numerous additional cost items, um, possible with this job? Because that's what we're agreeing to. I mean, there's a whole, long, two-page list of additional costs, potential costs. I don't forget that.
We don't like those additional.
It's kind of bizarre, I mean, it's.
So, this first one, the Waywood Services, um, um, well, on the bottom, it says board replacement, two boards. So, they only do like two boards, they need to replace.
Yeah.
Wow.
But he didn't check underneath, but the other two, um, went over it.
I don't know. I mean, I have, I think I got, I got no application that I got the grant, but I haven't gotten any other.
Like, what?
Yeah. I, I, I honestly don't know what to do. I, I don't like the Harley contracting, I, I don't like their extra costs, like Dan said. But I don't know, as far as like the Waywood, they didn't go on, um, on the bottom, and that, that doesn't make me feel very confident.
Yeah. And also, too, the boards you replace, are they gonna be treated, are they already eaten?
Right.
Yeah, instead of the brand new ones.
Right, same.
Yeah. So. He cleans that, he does the whole, the whole ramp, I mean, the whole deck, um, decking, on there.
Where's this clean cut at?
Um, he's out in Baltimore. Yeah, both Kelly and, uh, clean cut out in Baltimore, where is it, uh, Sycamore County?
I have some.
Should we visit two more folks? It's like, they could, there's a forum, I mean, like, forty or fifty more.
Okay.
Get a, get one of the units, yeah.
It's a straight for the job.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a great, right? Those are.
They're so different. And I would spec it out, however you want to judge, you know, so it's adequate, not like that. Three different things, there are four different contractors that are, that approach it, but, yeah. All of them.
So, we'll do, um, I like the idea of replacing the dock.
I, I think it needs it. I mean, I walked on it, and I, yeah.
I think.
I mean, if you're gonna do anything now, you might as well just replace it.
Yeah, I think the one, we replace the deck. That's the main thing, replace the deck, you have it refinished in a year.
Right. So, I guess let's pull off on it, and then, you, you can look for more people and whatever. In the meantime, if I did something from the IMC that says, you know, this is what you have to get done by. If we need to do a special meeting or something, then.
Yeah. And, yeah, there's a couple other people I saw, I could, uh.
I wonder if we maybe reference from any of these people, was that?
References. Well, that's not a bad idea.
I'll see if there's any on the line.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Would it be feasible to hire a contractor to look at that, an expert in build stacks? Not to hire them? I'm just gonna throw a name.
I was just gonna say.
I'm just gonna throw a name up there. And I'm not making any.
Yeah, go ahead.
Suggestions. Let's just say either Mr. Manager or Mr. Operator.
I was gonna say.
Tell us one, I mean, he's got three people who are telling me three different things. Maybe the whole town may need you there.
And if that's in case.
Well.
You don't wanna spend the ten thousand dollars, and then in two years, say, oh, we have to replace the whole thing.
Well, actually, two of them do, um, clear, clean cut, and Kelly are saying the same thing. It's just their cost to look at contracts and them. While they both agree that that can be replaced or something. But I will call.
Everything else will be sealed.
One of the individuals you call out, call tomorrow and have.
Right, and I didn't say anything to make you suggest that.
No, that's, Brenda, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree with that, too.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, and asking, like, somebody could just come and say, yes, you need to replace everything, or no, it's fine, and that's all.
What about, what about our building inspector? That is here, right?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah. All right, so we're gonna put this, um.
We're not supposed to comment.
Okay, um, the next one is, um, Michigan code official building inspector and plan reviewer package. Our building official. Our, um, building official is asking, instead of going to classes in person, he's asking the township to purchase the Michigan code official, the code official, building official inspector and plan reviewer package. It's a fifty or, fifty-four hour package, and meets requirements for construction building official inspection and plan reviewers. The price is five hundred and nineteen dollars. Um, it's good for three years, satisfies the state requirements for three years. And our building official could do it at his own pace, if he had the time.
I'll, I'll approve the purchase. For five hundred and nineteen dollars.
Um, quick question. Does he work for another township?
No.
He has his own business?
Only co-officer.
What do you think, huh?
He has his own business?
Yeah, he's a whole.
And this goes, this is applicable to his business as well?
Well, I'd say some of the information, I'm sure, can.
So, it's business.
I think she's asking, does he need this for his current business? No, no, okay, no, he needs this as a building official here at the township.
Certification, isn't it, certification, you said, boy or Jen?
Yeah.
Okay, he could.
Do it at home at his own pace.
He doesn't have.
I'm just, I'm just thinking about the days where we had building inspector where we split costs with another township. He doesn't have another township, he doesn't have another.
Yeah, he, he only does co-officer there, other township.
It's cheap at the price, I mean, it's, it's a lot of education, three years of education for, hard to know for lots of people.
All right.
Okay, so you're making up your spoiling dance, won't you?
No, I'm not, I'm just questioning him.
I generally support education for contractor officials and employees in a general sense, and, uh, if you look at our building inspector, he's got lots and lots of certifications, and keeps getting more, and that's as much as you can expect, believe you expect, you know, so.
All right. And I'll support.
Okay.
There's a shortage of educational certifications, just across the board, and they claim, impressive. I'm not opposed to them adding to that, adding to that.
Either way, it was drive it, or do that house, so.
I think.
Either you drive it, or you take that house, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would have sent him to some town or hotel there.
Okay, we have motion support to approve the purchase of the Michigan code official, building, building official inspector and plan reviewer package for five hundred and nineteen dollars. Okay, uh, we have a roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, Stevens, yes. Okay, Sebert Velasquez, PLLC, and board is one, three, six, four, six.
I have a question, I'll let you have it on there. There's a land purchase, a land sale.
Yeah.
Charlie, what is that about, if you can discuss it?
Oh, this is, is this the one on the second page?
Yeah, Charlie.
Yeah, this was about ten years ago. The, the property in the very northeast corner of township, there was a, um, a landlot parcel. And at the time supervisor, they'll room that. We had an agreement, I remember when we did this, we had a proven agreement where there's this landlot that we bought the parcel, and then the neighbor, we bought the parcel from the county, and then the neighbors ended up buying it from us. Well, there's a, a section of it, there's three parcels, and one of them has an incomplete, um, property description, uh, land description. And, um, I had our attorney look into it. Uh, I talked to our assessor, and her assessor said, hey, have our attorney? And both our assessor, like, said, this would be solved if you just get a survey of the property.
Precisely.
And that's what our attorney, our attorney reviewed, um, the paperwork and that, and she came up with the same agreement, that the owner.
So, why don't we just instead of going to the. So why didn't we just instead of going to the attorney, just say get a survey? Because here is the goal of the project. So the people that were gap at closing, whatever, they should have looked at incomplete legal description. And from what I understand, these are the ones that did the legal description, so why were we on the hook for twenty-one seventy-five?
Good question. They created their own problem. We addressed the problem over ten years' time, multiple times. The assessor, her bottom line, and you have never listened to an assessor's bottom line, when she says, get a survey. These people went round and round and round and round to do everything except get a survey, which would have cost about two thousand dollars. And now we are paying two thousand dollars and there's still no survey. Do not overlook what the assessor tells you when she tells you. Talk about someone who has information, classes, certification, state certification, county certification, when she says, do this for the good of the township and the homeowner, do that and stop right there. And that's all I have to say about that. I said, we have now two thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars and there still is no survey. So we have not solved the problem that the guests have had for ten years. And this is, this is all not a good thing, not a good thing. This is why we pay an assessor who happens to be the best in two counties and employed by the state of Michigan as well. You really can't do better than her advice. So I'm a little upset that we have spent this kind of money and no one yet has given us a survey that we can work with. Let that be a lesson to everybody here, go to the person in the township hall who has dealt with the problem beforehand. Because, believe you me, we get it first. The assessor gets it first, the assessor's assistant does everything she can to put the information together for people and give them the best advice about where to go to solve their problem. And nine times out of ten, it ends with the sentence, get a survey. So let that be a lesson to us all. Do not be running here and there and, and talking to attorneys and planning commissions and everyone else when you have the answer to your question sitting in that office.
Here's a question. Are we supposed to get a survey?
No, we aren't supposed to.
We're done, we sold it. That's right, we sold it.
We don't own the property, yes.
I, I, I'm probably, I just come back to ours and I say, you know, I.
I think.
It doesn't seem like it's our property.
From what I understand, people don't want to sell their property. There's a real estate broker who, um, and our assessor said, you know, we're gonna survey. And our, I.
We don't own the property, we own it, somebody else does, so why are we involved in this at all?
True. Well, to me, it seems like, um, they own the three parcels there and there's the one that doesn't. And they, they, they just don't wanna pay for the cost of the survey.
So, yeah.
No?
Only we, we paid for more than the survey, but we haven't surveyed.
Right.
This makes no sense to me now.
Why do you need, why do you need a survey, they need a survey.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
So why are we paying our attorney to rule on something?
I called, I called the attorney, I called my attorney just to.
Called the assessor, we already paid her a salary.
I, the, the law firm did this, I didn't realize she was gonna charge this much.
Well, she charged you what, a hundred and forty-five dollars an hour?
Looks like we need to be careful of what we take on as hours when it's not hours in the future.
It's, it, it's always distressing to people to have to pay money. But it's in their best interest to know where, if someone calls our office and says, where are my property lines? If we have a current survey, I can ask the assessor, I'll ask the assessor's assistant, find you a survey in the basement. If we do not have a survey, the only sentence you ought to say to these people is, get a survey. That's the only, that's the only legal means by which you know where your property lines are. If somebody's building a fence and they're putting it on your property, co, if you don't have a survey, this is the time to get one. I don't understand how anybody buys a property without a survey, but some people seem to be able to do that. Everyone has to do their job, but the basic job is for the property owner to have a survey of his property. That is your first and last line of protection. And not all the legal opinions in the world are going to help you if you don't have a current adequate legal survey.
It appears that we took on an issue that was not ours with our attorney and now we're obligated to pay our attorney, which, that's logical. Why wouldn't you get on in the first place? I don't quite understand that.
Well, they had the, I just wanted to, um, get a little bit of background on this.
We've had ten years of that, you know, around us. We've been dealing with this for ten years and listening to these people, um, upset about their property lines. And yet, they are not upset enough to get a survey.
That doesn't even make sense.
True. And this bill does not make sense to me.
No, it doesn't, yeah, and I think it is too challenging. I, I'd really like our.
Well, she, to me, she didn't have a right on the cash, we didn't have the work, but the work to, what was the work was not necessary. We've, we've, we've gone over this problem and over this problem for years now. And our answer has always been the same. This is in your best interest to get a survey. And, and, and we have to remember that phrase now, that we are splitting so much property. We're giving so many two acre splits, five acre splits, all these lovely farms, you know, plus, plus the harshest, they're, they're going on to the, the next generation. That generation, if they wanna sell that property, needs to have a survey. So they know what they're selling and somebody knows what they're buying. And if they're gonna, if they're going to go into procedures without that basic information, then we should just put it up the lands and grabs and say, uh-uh, it starts in Port Huron. It doesn't even start here, it starts in Port Huron. And when you come to us with, with, uh, a transfer that says you own the property and now you split the property, then we can begin a conversation. Before that, we're just, we're just spinning our wheels and getting ahead of ourselves. I know that we're, we're trying to do our best for the people that live here and the people that are moving in. But believe me, the best thing for them is to know where their property lines are. And that's all I'm thinking about that. For the town.
Okay, I guess my question is, would you guys suggest we do that, I mean?
There's nothing to do.
I'm puzzled by her attorney deciding to look into it at this, at this step and I'm gonna say, this is not my real problem. And you don't need a consulting officer because this is their problem and they need to consult your attorney or Mr. Better and get it solved, not us. And I'm puzzled by that answer being going forward more quickly, because it seems obvious. And, and it seems obvious. What's that, in the first place, why don't you try to solve it?
Me, I, me having a turn to do, I, um, I, she told that she met, her, her, me and the, um, met there and, um, she told them, that told them, tell your clients to get a survey.
And it should have just gone after that?
Yep, that's one sentence.
Yep.
Actually, thirty seconds.
I think we have to be careful in the future not to bring our attorneys in for problems that aren't that obvious. Just try to figure that out before you go forward. And the attorney can probably help answer that question immediately at very low cost.
I'm sure you're welcome to answer that, but, um, I appreciate you by the hour.
I appreciate Josiah for providing, uh, the president's get through things. In this case, that's a good, but it is generally, considering policy is good, if this is costly, that's important. I think we are there because she proposed allegations because we asked her to. If they're asked to do, they, they have to.
No, that's it. They just told me the survey.
Okay. Okay. I'm realizing.
I mean, this, if we have a decision to make about the bill.
Yeah.
Not using the breath.
Yeah. Okay, oh, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Pay three thousand five hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-five cents to Sebert Velasquez.
Okay, do we have support for that?
Sure.
We have motion support to pay, um, the invoice for Sebert Velasquez. Um, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Ethan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stover, no.
Okay, Stevens, yes. Motion carries. Okay, Cool's Plumbing, um, I contacted the three plumbers, only one, um, we have down in the basement, our sump pumps, we have a primary sump pump and a backup. The back, the backup pump, some pump went bad. Um, so he, he suggested we replace the, he's gonna take the primary, put in the backup and put a new pump there for a primary and a check valve. Costs five hundred dollars.
Is that, we got nothing to compare them, I have no idea what some pumps cost or.
Yeah.
It's, it's the leverage.
Well, I know.
So, I mean, I could get prices out of there, but.
You said you tried to make a phone line on the back of your stuff, what else are you gonna try?
Yeah. It's, yeah, he's the only one that's funny. It's for the pumps about labor. Yeah. It's, I just did one for you.
You did what?
I just had one replaced very young, so I assume that's, uh, that's. My resume's always.
I mean, if it needs replacing.
It needs replacement. The old one was, was blowing the, um, the circuits. And we need two of them and they were going ahead two years ago, well, that was before we hit the generator, we had the power out and we had to get water underneath, I pulled it before there, so. Okay. So we're.
I wanted to get the sump pump replaced.
Okay.
For the, uh, the point that we had, I don't know.
Yeah, five hundred. Or a second and third.
I'll second and motion.
Okay, we have motion, uh, motion and second to get a new sump pump replaced and, uh, check valve from Cool's Plumbing. Roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stover, yes.
Stevens, yes. Motion carries. I'd like, uh, I don't know, I'd like to reappoint, um, Maria Sheska and Debbie Morgan to the Casco Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee with a term starting one October twenty twenty-five and ending September twenty twenty-eight. All these ladies do a lot of good work for us, so, yeah.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support to reapprove, Maria Sheska and Debbie Morgan to that. Casco Township Parks and Recreation Committee with a term starting one October twenty twenty-five and ending September thirty-two, um, twenty twenty-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, there's another citizen's comment.
Um, I'd like, uh, I don't know, I just want to be part of more comments. I noticed the detailed report, the payment to, um, Philip Simon Light, uh, sign. I'd like to know what kind of actions have been going on for this resolution, it still is not fixed.
Yeah, I, I.
Well, that's my comment coming up. And also, as to this Sebert Velasquez, uh, it's very discouraging. This is taxpayer dollars, two thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. And each and every one of us in this bill, you do our utmost to do the jobs that we've either been elected to do or hired to do. So whoever these questions need to go to, need to go to. I don't take any phone calls from the trainer's office and, oh, yeah, this is, well, I, I'll call the county. I don't do that. I tell them, I cannot answer your question if you hold, I'll put you to Mrs. Stover or to Lynn. We need to try to stay in our own lanes. If you know the person who knows the answer, that's who you send your residents. You don't spend fifteen hours, a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour of taxpayer money. When the assessor has the answer.
Tell them to talk to the assessor.
Yes. And then someone has to say about that.
Okay, anyone else think, Brenda? Okay, board comments?
I have a couple. First, um, I think it was last month that the auditors came, was it this month? Or the, we discussed this, um, and I told you I was gonna look into doing that one report, that F sixty-five report.
Yes.
No, not the F sixty. Uh, that one, and the Parks and Rec. I can do the Parks and Rec, no problem. But F sixty-five, it's, it's way too hard.
Okay, but I can do all the, um, I can do all the information for the Parks and Rec, that's just a matter of, um, interest income.
Yeah.
And.
Well, you just get the, there's a sheet coming out and I put everything up so that you all can see that and then go through the description that you did. And I must say, it was a hundred or seventy-five dollars, but the other report is way too, because it's, it's, and I don't have the data numbers, so I will do it. I'm not gonna tell them that. Um, second, I went to the Bureau of Elections Conference, it was their first conference ever in Lansing this week. Learned a lot of stuff about elections, um, and I also went to the, uh, today, the week before, learned about the AI and how it can help us, um, so very informed and learned a lot of stuff. I always say if I learn at least one thing from each class, that it's worth it, so.
Thanks for your time.
All right, anyone else? I just had, uh, first of all, park update, um, we got the preliminary scores on our, um, expert grant for the playgrounds and we, this score is high as we hoped we would. So, Patty and I are already working at some of the things that bring on our score. The final score will be, um, in December. Uh, the Parks and Rec Committee, we met the other day and, um, we're gonna, I had Brian look into getting post and a cable for the front of the park, so when we close the park, we decided we vest from one December through thirty-first of March. So it'll be a little bit of a physical barrier on that. We also have the training a week from tonight for the planning commission meeting. So, and due business of, at planning meeting, our planner is gonna conduct a trade session for the planning commission, ZBA members and members of the township board. And I hope everyone's here, as will be the attendants. Okay, that's it.
And you can have a sign.
What's, oh, yeah. Um, I did talk to our attorney, um, she said that she's been trying to get, she hasn't heard from Bush Direct. she hasn't heard from Works Direct, well, we're waiting on Works Direct, okay, the video cards and cables, when Phillips Light located it, they tried to locate the vendor who makes it, so they said a replacement. They couldn't locate it, somewhere off in Asia, so they were requesting that we get the information from Works Direct, who's the maintaining side, and our attorney has not been contacted.
So how long are we going to wait for none of the, how long is it going to take?
I think in twenty-twenty-two, it's almost.
So it's a few years. How long are we going to wait before we?
Well, the sign is working, there's a couple panels.
So the sign is not working?
Yeah.
It's not.
They have a, this sign on there.
Yep, it's not a hundred percent.
Yeah.
And it hasn't done since we got it.
Right.
I mean, maybe the first few months or whatever, but something happened somewhere.
Yeah, but it's been working in our.
But there's still pixels that are outside the map, or the, there's things that are not quite there, so.
Well, I thought it would be a gentleman next month.
It should probably be a standing thing on old business until it's.
So it doesn't need to be out anyway.
Yeah, but Phillips did the sign going, and then they're willing to take over maintenance of the sign, we just, we need to get that information.
So what's Chris's next step? I mean, is she just waiting? Is there any kind, like, what's?
That's my question.
I'll follow up on that.
Yeah, because I mean, you can't just sit and wait forever, as, and, and, you know, you've sent emails, you've talked to somebody, every, every month on the legal bill, there's charges for her for the sign, but nothing's coming about, so.
Okay, I'll follow up. I know that the people are trying to go, we're talking about a sign, and we're talking to an attorney about a sign? Why, like, exactly?
She didn't want to fix it.
Why is that?
No, the attorney is, is trying to get the original people that purchased the sign from to help us, because they were not helping us, it wasn't working, and they were saying, oh.
So there's no warranty with it? No, there was, there was two, there was two entities, the, the company we bought the sign from, they built the cabinet, now they turn over the electronics into another, there's a company that built electronics, and we, they're the ones that came out and fixed it. Now, we had a hard time getting them to come out here to do anything, so we asked another Phillips sign and Chester here, they came right on out and they got it running, but there are some, a couple of boards on it that need replacement. The problem is the, the board, the manufacturing board, they need to find out who makes them from the market on, they can't, they tried tracking it, and they, they didn't know, there's lots of different places that they.
So maybe we need to just tell Chris that we're just gonna get a new sign, and the sign here, since twenty-twenty-two is when.
You're wasting the sign, sometimes you decide just to get.
Shut it off.
Exactly.
Go and wash it off.
You know, these things, we have one thing of.
There was a thirty thousand dollar sign.
And we need a sign.
Well, thirty thousand in county, it sounds like, I mean, sometimes you gotta stop the duty, but, yeah, well, if you can't get parts for it.
And sometimes it's just need a sign.
If you can.
It's costing thousands of dollars to get all.
She can keep sending emails, keep telling us, but nothing.
Get some person a sign, a real sign is that if you can verify the folks that sell to you, will back it up, and now this is in the state, I don't mean that you made that mistake, but that sign.
It was.
Okay, all right, okay, we're up for a adjournment?
I can't handle this right here.
Support.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.